Good to be back, John. Glad it's Jeff fool.
There you go.
There you go.
We're golden?
Yep, ready to go.
Alright guys, six o'clock, let's get started, uh, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, everybody here but Chelsea, she went with me with us tonight, we still have a quorum, so we're good. Alright, on the regular agenda that we've got in front of us, just the typo on number eleven, then that's not the...
Yeah, if number eleven is not a second reading, it's just a discussion action.
Gotcha. Okay, anybody else got any other additions, changes?
Mr. Eric, elevens for that.
Chuck policy.
That penalty.
It's the truck policy amendment.
Well, that was in reference to the, that penalty ordinance that they talked about last time.
Oh, is that the second reading for that?
Yeah.
Okay, then it is the second reading.
Okay. So it's a, it's a policy, it's just supposed to be ordinance.
Got it.
And then we'll talk about the policy after that.
So, motion to approve the agenda with said change.
Second.
Okay, Brandon, the motion's on the second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Consent agenda, any last minute changes on that one, Jim? No, nothing, unless you guys got any questions. Otherwise, I'm gonna accept the motion.
So.
Okay, favor the motion, Brian did the second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, see council meeting, minutes from last time? Did you guys see anything on there that got missed or whatever? Otherwise, I'm gonna accept the motion auto. I didn't see anything on there that was different than what we had talked about, so...
Motion approved.
Second.
Brian made a motion, do you do a second? Okay, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Okay, so we'll open up for public comments, anybody got anything you want to talk about or say here, chit chat? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move on to sheriff's reports. You must not have made it tonight, huh?
Uh, I know they were going to try and make it, they must have been on the call.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I can cover a couple items just for you, for your reference. Um, one is the deputies that we're working with, the sheriff's department, to, um, have some increased enforcement for traffic enforcement, running stop signs. We've had a lot of complaints of running stop signs at the four-way stop, Wall and Seventeen, so they are paying more attention to that and speeding. So, just to give people a heads up about that. Uh, there's the speed clock, or radar clock there off of Wall Avenue, going eastbound, just west of the four-way stop. Uh, that'll likely get moved over, uh, to be just after the bridge, on the west side of the bridge, here soon. Uh, we're just trying to make people aware of how fast they're driving along Wall Avenue, and encourage people to be aware of that and slow down. Uh, so we are working with sheriff's department on that. Um, we have seen some improvements with overnight parking. Most of the issues that I've seen now, and in talking with deputies, have been in regards to contractors parking their trailers. And we've been trying to work with those individuals too, or those companies do not park on the street. Our biggest concern with that, or one of our big concerns about that, is when they're parking trailers on the street and say they leave those trailers there for a couple days, especially if there's a load in there, the, on a hot summer day, that ton weight can damage the asphalt and damage our roads, so...
We've seen that over there.
Yeah, we've seen that in some developments already. So anyways, just, just a heads up, we're working with them on that. If there are any other updates, if...
So right here, right, at this point, no activity for the municipal court?
We have not.
I was wondering about that, are we gonna start getting updates regarding court proceedings or...
We can when there are, uh, basically if, if there's citation issued and the citation is paid, then...
It doesn't come to court?
It doesn't go to court.
Okay.
Yup. Uh, the other area we do have enforcement on is working with the deputies on, uh, truck overweight, over-dimensional enforcement. Uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more later tonight's meeting, um, but our staff did meet with the truck staff to just talk about consistency with policies and things like that, um, across the metro, but they are paying attention to Horace and they are coming down sporadically. They don't want to be, they, they don't come for long periods of time, because word gets out really quick that they're in town. Um, but they'll be down here more often, you'll see the truck enforcement. And I know they have been enforcing their, checking for compliance with different contractors, uh, where you'll see a lot of times, they're like dump trucks overweight, or somebody hauling an excavator, things like that, so we're communicating with them on that too.
But will we, will we get that municipal court report, e- even on a monthly basis?
If there's cases.
So would we get that from the deputies' report, or would that be a separate report?
You would have that from us, the deputies don't get involved with that as much, 'cause once it's been issued, once the citation is issued, that's all their hands, and then it's through the court process, and that would be, like Wendy and I, deal with the court processing.
It would be, would be interesting to know just how many fines were processed, e- even just to get a report of X number fines processed and, you know, paid, or how many times court went into session, just, just as a, so we can have that as a tracking mechanism.
Yup. I believe the first month or so, we had court in place, we had about five or six citations, and all of them were paid.
Okay.
I'm just giving you a ballpark, uh, it looks like they issued more citations here over the last, or in the month of July, or June. They said fifteen there, so that would probably change a little bit, and like, say if they pay it, then they'll have to go.
Right, so now that's, that's good to know that, okay, we are, you know, that, that's something that we didn't have before, so now this is, you know, a service essentially that we'll be able to handle ourselves.
Yup. Yup.
Alright, well if those guys show up a little bit later, we'll bring them on, but otherwise, let's just move on to number eight, so Barrett, you got that one?
Yup, uh, so staff had received a complaint of possible nuisance violation at Sixth and Flora Boulevard Court. Uh, staff visited the site and verified the presence of, uh, building materials and items classified as junk that were in violation of our Title Fifteen City Ordinances, uh, fifteen dash oh three oh seven, one oh three. Uh, we met with the residents, we discussed a deadline to abate the issue, the deadline passed, so as required by city ordinance fifteen oh three twelve. Uh, we sent the property owners a written notice, uh, to abate the issues. Uh, as soon as that deadline passed, a second letter was sent. Uh, in that second letter, we stated that if they were not abated by a certain date, that, uh, they, we would bring this to the city council. And we verified on July thirteenth that those issues were not abated. Uh, council member Schmidt, if you could pull up my staff report, I have some pictures that I took of the site that are included with the memo. Uh, just so that you can get an idea of, uh, some of the violations that occurred. So this is the front of the house, there's a stack of two-by-fours or lumber, uh, you know, we, I believe there's a wheel out in the front yard. Uh, we got, um, just stuff all over, that, the backyard, we had quite a bit, there's cinder blocks and boards and miscellaneous items, uh, ladders, unused furniture, as kind of a close-up. Um, so staff decided at this point to bring it to the city council, and I'll, I'll let our city attorney explain why we chose this method rather than bring this to municipal court.
So under your ordinances, uh, it allows for both, either bring this to the city council, or bring it to municipal court for prosecution. The reason that we went with this route is it's more efficient, and it doesn't bring a criminal proceeding against the property owner, which, uh, for a nuisance item, uh, that's not something that I want to have to bring against someone, but if we have to, we have that avenue. And so the, the route that was picked, the method, was just to have this go before the city council, uh, give the, uh, property owner an opportunity to come and discuss, you know, is this a nuisance or not, and, and that way the council can hear their side of the story before this thing has to go to court. Uh, that's not to say that this still won't go to court. Uh, it's kind of, what does the council think after seeing those pictures, uh, letters have been sent, the property owner is not in compliance? The, the most efficient option here is for the city council to just make a decision of, yes, city staff hires someone to go in there, clean up the property, remove the items that Barrett had specifically referenced in his letters, uh, and then it's a done deal. And then the city just assesses the property for that, rather than dragging this out by going through court, and then the judge just gives, uh, a penalty for violating the, the ordinance by not complying, and throws down a penalty of, we don't know, zero to a thousand dollars, could be twenty bucks, and then we're still right back to where we were before, whereas this method, we can get both parties, uh, in front of the council, with the city staff, and the property owner, tell their side of the story, and go from there. So that's where we're at, and don't hope the property owner is here, uh, to present before you tonight, but, uh, now it's up to the council on how would you guys like the city, our city staff to present with us.
So has there been any communication, I mean, have they come, any rebuttals or any conversations since those letters went out?
Yeah, ever since the letters have gone out, we haven't had any communication with the property owner at all.
Okay. Do you try to get ahold of them, or call, contact them beyond the letter?
You know, I guess I just didn't want to muddy the waters, and I just wanted to keep a simple record of the actions.
Okay, I'm just, just wanting to know what kind of communication was that, if it was beyond the letters, so... You guys have any questions on this? And I think that's a good recommendation, get the staff to go clean it out. They've been, they've, you know, two letters, I mean, we've kind of gone through this before.
We, this is our process, this was possibly put in place some two, three years ago, right?
This started one of my first years, six years ago, and we talked about it, and I, Lucas came in, Lucas, even probably before you, uh, probably worked with Sarah, started, 'cause we had an ordinance set up and started working it, and we didn't have enough staff to go through the process, send letters out, because there is a process that's called, now that we have that, we need to do that. This is one issue that I hear about from time to time, and I'm sure all...
I get phone calls too.
It's from very, various areas around town, you know, take pride in your property and keep it clean.
Keep it clean, yeah, so... So we want to make a motion, then?
I make a motion that we proceed with staff moving forward.
Second.
John, Brian, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two unanimous, so, okay, motion carries. So, okay Barrett, we got your, you know what to do there.
Okay, uh, second, uh, nuisance violation is similar to the first, except this one, uh, we had complaints of weeds, uh, so staff visited, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, my computer's really slow today.
So staff visited the site, we did verify the presence of weeds, um, can you, that's all building materials and items classified as junk. Uh, the property owner was contacted by phone, a deadline was discussed, uh, we verified that after the deadline, that it wasn't abated. Uh, we followed a similar process described, uh, with the first application, where two letters were sent out. Uh, after the second letter on July thirteenth, uh, staff visited the site and once again verified that none of the nuisances, uh, have been evaded, and therefore, uh, property owner was notified by a letter of, uh, this issue being brought forth before the city council today to, uh, discuss the recommended action to, uh, direct staff to enter the property and abate the nuisance. Then as you'll see here, on the back of the house, there appears to be items that are building materials, uh, boards, uh, maybe debris of some sort.
These have been here for a period of time?
Uh, probably around two months. And then on the back, the tires stacked up, looks like a commercial sign laying on the lawn.
Okay, so again, I'll probably just ask, has there been phone, any phone conversations besides that initial one?
No.
You said there was an initial phone call?
Uh, initially, uh, prior to following this process and sending letters out, where I spoke with the property owner, uh, we discussed a deadline of abating the issue, I discussed how it could be abated, we agreed on that deadline, uh, orally or verbally, um, and I visited the site after that deadline and discovered that, uh, none of the issues have been abated.
The yard upkeep has been there for probably two years, I bet.
I haven't heard, but I'm probably so...
Just to touch base really quick, what I've asked Barrett to do is whenever possible, reach out to them verbally, so that's what he's doing there. Um, but after that, the initial communication, if they're not reciprocating afterwards, then we're going through a more formalized process.
I understand, I'm just trying to get a gauge.
Yeah, just letting everybody know though, that is, that is the typical process, whenever we get code enforcement issue to tackle, most of the time, we're going to try to reach out, try to handle it before going to relatively letters and all that, saves everybody time by doing that, but...
Agreed, and most of the time, they're compliant with that.
Most of the time, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah, we've been very successful with diplomacy, we've had a lot of property owners who've complied and abated the issues.
So there has been compliance, but these are just the two outliers that haven't, that responded or done anything at this point?
At this time, correct.
And the city's given plenty of time with this, your ordinance says that it's only forty-eight hours, and then a little more than forty-eight hours notice.
I know if it comes here, we've gone through almost a laborious process to this point, but...
Weeks since the first letter's sent out.
Yeah, I know. So, you guys want to move?
Motion to allow our city staff to continue the process, sort of next steps, sir.
Okay, do you mean motion, John did a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay Barrett, you know what to do there. Brenton, food truck apps.
Uh, very simple one here, we have two applications for food truck permits, our first food truck permits we've ever had, the luxury giving out. Um, as you recall, I believe it was last year, we had food truck ordinance approved by city council, uh, that was mainly anticipation of, with all, all the different construction activity going on within the area, and not having very many options for people to eat at, uh, place where people have variety of places to go to and help support our community. We've been working with Horse Lutheran Church, so Horse Lutheran Church has agreed to allow food trucks to be out there, uh, working with the city. Uh, what we would be doing is help coordinate and have a porta potty out at the church parking lot. Uh, these food trucks will be located on the west side of the church parking lot, so they can be visible from Kindled Seventeen. Uh, and we're trying to discourage traffic from going into the church, thus the porta potties. Uh, based on our ordinance, they're required to submit a twenty-five dollar fee, and with that, they fill out the application, provide proof of liability insurance, and we just run through what we'd be expecting, you know, get them to copy the ordinance and discuss that with them. They are responsible for their own trash removal from the site as part of the ordinance in place, and we are looking to have food trucks starting every Wednesday. Our first, our goal is to have at least July twenty-second and July twenty-ninth, so this Wednesday and next Wednesday. There's a sign out in front of Horse Lutheran Church with the dates, trying to encourage people to know about it. Uh, if it's successful, which we hope it would be, we'd be getting, hopefully getting more vendors, or having to take turns, have a rotation out there. So there's different choices at different times. Um, but the ordinance does require that all food permits are brought to the city council for approval, and a permit is good for, they get it in January, or they get it in July, it, it's valid until, I believe, end of November, or November. So it's right around that timeframe, pretty much you're not going to have a food truck out in November anyways, so... Uh, like I said, the permit is good for the calendar year until that date, after then, they can get, apply for another permit. It doesn't automatically, you're going to have to apply for it again. So, if they do have a different location that they're looking to have it at in town, they do need to communicate that with us, so we can make sure that it's not a conflict, so...
Do they have to have a business license, in St. Mark Dakota, for operating?
I believe they have, I think our ordinance does require them to be licensed through health department, so that, I believe they would have to have the...
Shouldn't we see verification in that?
I think, I think we're, the city requires that, because they have to get inspected by the Cass County Public Health.
Yeah, they have to be subject to Cass County Public Health requirements, so if they are complying with the, their requirement for a business license.
We could search the, the, um, states.
I think they should submit it when they...
Do you need to do that search?
It should be nice to do submit it, because I mean, we see the application, the insurance liability, you have it all in one.
Yup.
Yeah, but that would be nothing, just take a picture of their...
Right, it's just a copy of their business license, whatever they're getting...
So your, your ordinance says that the license holder must comply with all North Dakota Department of Health and other applicable regulatory agency requirements, uh, and the license holder must display in conspicuous location all such required licenses and/or certificates.
So it should be in your vehicle.
Yeah, they have to have it on hand.
Yeah.
So I guess that'll be...
It'd be easy enough to give us a copy of it, we should go looking for it.
Yeah, so we could ask for that, and ask for that for future there if you'd like, um, and then...
It's just if anybody has any questions, it's like, here they are.
Yup. The other, the other side of it is, is somebody going to go inspect and just make sure that they're complying?
Their, Cass County Public Health can do that anytime. What we tried to do is have the inspection, when we developed that ordinance, we tried to have all inspections and things like that, help done by the individuals that deal with this every day. You don't want me going and inspecting a food truck, because I won't know what I'm looking for.
Well, you can even just say that they have a license, or, you know, that is, somebody else isn't setting up a business, you know, a food truck when they aren't authorized, right?
Yup.
So in addition to other stuff, the license holder must provide the number of vehicles they intend to operate as a food truck, description of all food trucks they intend to operate, license plate information for each truck, VIN for each truck, proof of insurance coverage for each truck, proof of fire and safety inspection for each food truck. So that's in addition to the health licenses that they have to display, so...
And they provide that on the insurance liability, I believe.
Think some of that's on there, yeah.
Yeah, and on the application there.
Yeah, we don't want to make it horribly restrictive, we just want to do what everybody else is doing as far as how we...
Basically, we didn't want this random truck to be showing up that we didn't know was legit, that was the intention of this, so...
Just looking forward to some different cuisine in town.
Right, I would make a motion to approve pending that they have all licenses in place.
How do you want, you want them to send that in, I mean, is what you're getting at?
Yeah, I, you know, also in the application here, you don't, it, it doesn't say that, uh, the parking, the amount of vehicles in the application. You know, I, I definitely don't want to be fighting, you know, being argumentative on it, but in our ordinances, are they clear? Have they been told specifically what our ordinance is, and do they understand all of that?
Right.
Because in this application, it doesn't tell all everything.
Well, maybe that's partly on us then, to put that in the act.
It could be, it could be, you know, basically excerpts from those ordinances and have them sign that as evidence that I've read it and I'm aware of it.
Yeah, but then we should make that clear when we present that to them, that that's something we're expecting and not trying to come up after the fact.
Yeah, we'll touch base with them on...
Yeah, that's probably what you're asking for.
Bit of learning, but hey, so how we, how we improve on these things, right?
We're learning as we go.
Yeah, well, you know, this fails, negative publicity is gonna...
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Alright, so John made a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, do the second, okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, Brenton, you got this one, or Lucas, which one you guys are going to pick this one?
Okay, I think what we'll do is, we do have two, two folds, I thought there's, I thought we had, it's two items, it looks like one, so... You were touching base on the amendment, the second reading?
Yup.
For the ordinance?
So we've approved both of them.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have two separate action items, so Lucas will talk about the amendment as second reading, and then I'll touch base on the...
No, no, I'm talking about the food truck, so the food truck, we approved both, both applications, okay.
Yup, anyways, Lucas will go over the amendment update, or ordinance update, and then I'll talk about the amendment to the truck policy.
Yeah, so the, you'll recall last meeting, we discussed those two penalty provisions that we're adding, that were in the century code. Uh, the city already covers, uh, overweight vehicles, but this is, uh, adding penalties in for over-dimensional vehicles, um... And it provides the, the fines under that, uh, council member Schmidt, you brought up one of the other fines, uh, and the city does have that, uh, if it goes to trial. That's when it gets into the, so many cents per pound that's overweight. This one is just for, if you violate it, here's what the penalty is, that way it's a, um, more efficient process with municipal court. So again, tonight is just the second reading of that ordinance.
Okay. Maybe you got any questions, nothing's changed on it?
No. No, and this is just being pulled from the century code.
Yeah.
So, do you need a motion to approve?
Yup, second reading.
So make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance?
Okay, Brian made a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John did a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second reading's approved. You want to talk about the amendment?
Yup, so what this is, and you have it up there, what we ran across is, we were going through, had Lucas up there, or go through comments of the truck over-dimensional vehicle policy, overweight policy that we had brought to council a few months back, uh, in order to get a truck policy in place so we can enforce these overweight vehicles and over-dimensional. Uh, Lucas had quite a few comments on that to check it with the century code, and really what we went through is we were trying to mirror off of what West Fargo had for consistency, looking at what our peers are doing. What we found out in the meantime now is, and just recently is, that actually West Fargo was looking at changing it, or going with the Fargo and Cass County one, and being that we have Cass County deputies, we wanted to make sure there was consistency, because there was quite a bit of confusion in regards to enforcement tied to weight of vehicles, what the penalties would be, things like that. So, what you have before you is the Cass County and Fargo policy modified to fit Horace. Now Lucas would review this still, but in order to be able to minimize confusion for our deputies that we're working with, that are enforcing this, uh, we're asking that we have this policy in place. Not much has changed, if anything, it's more robust, this policy does address, uh, a few other areas that we haven't in our previous one, such as like if a windmill was, wind turbine or something was to come through, house moving, snow removal, they identify as snow removal vehicles from the city are exempt from it, because obviously you want to make sure we have our loads to be able to put salt and sand down.
Right.
Um, it talks about a very simplified fee schedule within the policy, and then it gives more direct contact for who to contact if there's issues. Uh, we do have a permit form that is together now, uh, we are starting to get calls about permits. Uh, our original intentions were that if anybody doing a project for a city, they'd be exempt from that, and the recommendation from their deputies was not to do that though, so you're treating everybody as the same, you know, fair approach. Uh, what our plan would be is, if council was to approve this policy, like I said, it's the same, basically the exact same one that Fargo and Cass County are using. If Lucas does have any other additional comments to it, we could either bring back that view as just to summarize, hey, we need to make another tweak to this. Otherwise, we'll wait till the winter, and what we'll do is sit down with our, with, uh, the Cass County deputies that do truck enforcement, and just go through the policy again and go, what's working, what's not? Because we're going to find some areas that just may not work for Horace, and we'll be able to have some actual situations where enforcement has occurred, and see what's better practice for us, so, um, but like I said, what we're looking for is to get, get this in place and reduce the confusion that they would have within that, and this would also reduce confusion with the, uh, contractors or those individuals hauling those loads, because they don't have to, they, they have one policy to become familiar with instead of multiple ones.
So is there, I noticed the one section made a reference to a truck route, so do we have to change anything in terms of our road signage? So that it's clear which roads are truck route versus, so based on the type of road, so that it can allow the deputies to be able to enforce it? Or it's clear to the driver that, okay, I'm not supposed to be on this kind of road?
Yeah, we shouldn't have to change anything to signage, because signage was based on a weight to mount.
Okay.
So the only truck routes, or truck signs that we have, we have a truck route sign, um, for just getting over to just east of here.
Right here in front here.
Uh, the business is there, and that's just trying to encourage... Uh, the businesses there, and that's just trying to encourage them on a concentrated route.
Right.
Uh.
There's a no truck route on the fourth.
Yeah.
So there is a sign that says no trucks.
No trucks, but.
It's kind of vague, it's maybe fine, but.
Really what we're looking at is the, the one where we have on Wall Avenue or Sixty Fourth, we have signs up there too. That say, you know, six ton road weight limits, that's what the deputies are going to force. Uh, we're going to update that map to show that, because the classifications are a little different than here, but overall, we're looking at tonnage on a road, not. Not much else beyond that.
Because that's the big concern right now with the amount of cement trucks and so forth that are going into Cub Creek and the school and so forth. That that's the primary concentration of traffickers on County Seventeen and, you know, now Lakeview, right, going into that area.
Wall Avenue.
Oh, and that's right.
Yeah, Wall's the big one, Sixty Fourth is the other big one. Um, as for trucks that are compliant on County Road Seventeen, that's enforced through the county. But if they get off County Road Seventeen at all, which they will, then it applies to them, so.
Captain.
All right, any other questions? Just mean, want to yea or nay on this one?
We would be looking for yea or nay, and like I said, Lucas would be going through, uh, find to call me if there's any concerns. And we would just bring a summarized version back, to you just saying, we're going to change this verbiage here, this was said before, and this is what it'd be after. So, that way you wouldn't see as big of a document.
So you're just looking for approval to proceed?
Approval of the policy.
Oh, approval of the policy.
Outdated policy, yeah. And like I said, it's for the enforcement, for the deputies there. We were going to do just our old one, but there are enough changes there where we thought it would be best just to be consistent.
And this is, we, we may update this by resolution, and basically we can adopt, change this by resolution, right?
You could update it just by council action.
Okay.
So you don't, you don't even need a resolution, your resolution should be tied to the fee structure, is my understanding.
Motion to approve the truck overweight, over, oversized policy.
Second.
Okay, Brian made a motion, Dave to the second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Okay, Barrett, you got number twelve.
Okay, what you have before you is the second reading of the text reminder proposal to modify the flat requirements. Um, in my staff report, I just implemented council's recommendation to have public notification, uh, distance requirements state that they're three hundred feet from the effective property. Other than that, no other changes have been made, uh, staff hasn't received any comments and therefore you recommend approval.
Right, that was taking into consideration our discussion at the last, when we did your first reading, so.
Okay.
That's the only change, so I don't know if there's any other. Unless you guys got something else you want to add to it, this is the second reading, so.
And planning and zoning, and everyone was okay with this?
Yeah.
Moving to accept that, um, what we want to say, uh, land use ordinance amendment, five requirements.
Dave makes a motion, take a second. Brian with a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Okay, just got the next one, Lucas or Barrett?
I got this one.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. I'll get in there.
Okay, what you have before you is a text reminder proposal, uh, from Eno Enterprises. This came to staff's attention during a building permit application where the applicant wasn't aware that the. C one neighborhood commercial zoning district didn't allow for childcare facilities and salon barber shop land uses. Um, after staff analyzed the application, we agreed with the applicant, we felt that these would be appropriate uses in the C one zoning district. And, uh, we found that the proposal meets all the requirements of the land use ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and therefore we recommend approval.
Was this just something that got missed or way back when, or?
Um, the applicant was unaware that these land uses weren't permitted in the zoning district. And staff didn't see a reason why we wouldn't permit these uses.
Okay, now, yeah, just trying to figure out where that.
I don't know too well about the commercial zoning.
Uh-huh. All right.
Councilmember Schmidt, please scroll down, please. My that's Jay Jordan, glad to look at Barrett's staff report.
Where?
Please scroll down, please.
Okay.
So I, I don't think they want a coffee shop anymore, so that'll, this is your actual ordinance, this is what you're acting on, so I'll have to change that. They don't want coffee shops on there, so.
Who doesn't want a coffee shop?
The applicant.
But this is, oh, this is only for that development.
No, it's the city ordinance, so if you want it there.
You could keep it there.
Why would you?
Oh, it doesn't hurt anything to leave it there, right?
Yeah, staff didn't want to modify an application that the applicant didn't want us to add language to.
In this case, in this case, for this development, but we wouldn't want an ordinance that would specifically prohibit a coffee shop if they decided to land out here.
Right.
Yeah, because they want a coffee shop out here at some point.
Yeah.
Guarantee it.
Well, what, how do we, how do we encompass everything possible?
Exactly, that, that's why I have an issue with the way it's worded, right?
That's why you have M.
That's why you have whatever M on there, leave the last one.
We, we added that to all the districts, I'm not going to laugh, right?
Just, yeah.
No, the, the coffee, the city council wants coffee shops on there, there's no reason why it can't be on there. This, this is the city's, it's the city's ordinance.
I'd just leave it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll open up for a public hearing if anybody's got any comments on this.
Anybody not like a coffee shop?
Yeah. Okay, going once, going twice, all right, close the public hearing on that, um. Okay, you guys want to do?
I made a motion that we accept the first reading of this, um.
The second reading, right?
This is first.
Oh, there's the first one?
We do two readings of this, stating that, right? Of the, uh, C one neighborhood commercial permitted use.
One second, nope. John got me.
John got you, all right. Dave made a motion, John did a second, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion passed. Brent, before we get on to fourteen, Thomas, you want to go ahead and give your report, I know you got in here a little late, so. We'll rewind back to, uh, seven here. Brent filled us in on a couple of things, but you go ahead.
I tried my best, Tom, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay with this mask?
Yes, sir.
First time I've had to speak in public like this with this thing on, so, uh, I thank you for, uh, having us here tonight.
Yep.
Um, as far as calls for service, uh, I'm sure you guys already went over this, so if you have anything for any of these dot or bullets, please let me know. Uh, according to the report, we had ninety-four total calls for service, two of them were crashes, two reckless driving calls, no juvenile complaints, two animal calls. Two alcohol related calls, six medical calls, fifteen citations were issued, eleven warnings were issued, no parking tickets, one parking warning. Uh, were issued, and there were zero drug related calls. Uh, Ross, when you threw this together, had some additional notes in here. Uh, we had a hundred and twenty-eight total calls for service, uh, those include calls that we don't normally screen through when we build these reports. There were eleven calls for service related to traffic, uh, eleven calls with us attempting to serve civil papers or warrants. Uh, we'd also like to remind anybody that's here that there is an overnight parking regulation, uh, between midnight and nine AM. So if you start seeing parking warnings, citations on your vehicle, try not to park them on the street at night. Something that we've been trying to do education with, so that's why we're putting on the notes here. Uh, during the last month, both myself and Deputy Ross Karzey attended mobile field force training. Uh, for those that are not familiar with that terminology, basically what that is, is, uh, people like to call it riot control, but there's a little bit more to it than that. Anybody have any questions for me, or comments of interest?
So the only question I had was the number of complaints, uh, from residents, I, I got personal complaints from fireworks. People continuing to light off fireworks outside the ordinance, uh, window, uh, I don't know if there were any, you know, personal calls, I, I. We were directing people to call the sheriff's office to follow up on that, uh, because there were quite a few, I mean, I heard it, you know, fully a week after. There were lots of fireworks still going on, and, and I don't know if there was any follow up or, you know, fines that came along with that, or, or how that was handled.
I haven't seen anything pop up yet, I have been stopped by one person out at Casey's, and I know that you guys, uh, when I stopped in at the office and informed me that there was a Facebook comment made about it. I'm not sure if we've had any, anybody caught with that yet, I know I have an extra patrol request in for that as well right now.
As I stated, the people I've talked to before, generally we try and talk with, or start with education first with any of these enforcement items.
So I do have, uh, in the extra patrol request, which everybody on patrol can see, um, the Horace City statute. So it's something that we try to, uh, inform people of. You said this is a full week after, have you heard any more recently?
Not, not within the last week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any locations where we might need or?
That's the problem, is you hear it after the fact, right, and then it's like, okay, it's still going on, it's dark, how are you going to find it? I, I, I recognize that, it's just, I don't know how we mitigate this, right?
Well, the best thing we can do is try and have that extra enforcement or extra patrol force. Uh, the people that I've talked to made it sound like it was happening on the east side of town, so that's where I've got the extra patrol in right now to see if we can hopefully find somebody in the act, so we can talk to them about it. But I would, uh, encourage anybody that is having issues with fireworks to please give us a call once happening, because the reports that I heard sounded like they'll do it for a little bit. Wait for a little bit and then start again, so if we can get somebody in the area, we might be able to find them.
Okay, I mean, that's all we can do, right, it's, it's, it's hard.
That's the best thing we can do, just call up when you've, uh, when you've observed it, so we can try and, try and talk to them if you know exactly who it is. We can keep you anonymous on calls, just tell us exactly where it is, we'll go talk to them.
Something that we can do to help that a little bit too, is maybe put on our Facebook page, or just get it out to the public too, what the dispatch number is. If they hear fireworks going off, here's the number to call. So you guys become, you know, so you're aware of it then, somebody's called in, so like you said, if they fire it off again, maybe we can tamp this down a little bit. Because, yeah, I agree, the week after the fourth, it was.
It, it was pretty bad, especially for people that are, you know, working different hours and so forth, and.
Yeah.
It's tough.
There's a week there that goes on that everybody's just kind of got to put up with, but after that, it really should stop.
Agreed.
Because that's the whole point, give a little bit of fun, then it's got to stop, we'll do it again at New Year's Eve type of thing, but, um. But that's why I was thinking, maybe we should just get some more information out there for folks, so they know what to do in case this happens again, so we can be a little quicker with that. So.
Any added information on the alcohol related?
I don't have that in the report, and since Ross is the one that compiled this, I don't know exactly what they're involved, I'm guessing it was DUIs, because I know we've had a few over the last few months.
Have you guys noticed any increase in anything that we need to be aware of, I mean, that there's starting to be a trend upward or anything? I can't, I mean, I've looked a couple, but I don't see any motion that we're having any super issues.
Nothing that I've noticed where I'd say there's a definite spike in anything that we'd want to be concerned about, such as, uh, assaults or burglaries. I know that we've had one of each here in the last month that were pretty notable.
Okay.
But nothing that I would say is a definite trend right now. I believe when Ross compiles this, he also doesn't look at the immediate Horace City limits, he looks at anything that would even be rural Horace, I believe, if I remember correctly. Just so we get an idea of what all is going on in the area.
Yeah, I just know there's so much construction vehicles in town here, that was my wondering if there's anything, if we're having an escalation in any burglaries in there.
Well, part of the problem we might want to consider in this would be, uh, something that in college they refer to as a dark figure of crime. We might not necessarily have a reported increase, but I know at least one person that stopped me and told me that there was a theft of a table saw, and I believe it was Tara Gardens. Um, they didn't want a report done, just want us to be aware of it.
Okay, yeah, and that might be too what's going on, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not seeing any spiking or increasing going on.
I haven't noticed anything myself that would say we have a significant increase right now, in anything that would be a concern other than traffic violations, but I guess just get them back and enforcing it working.
Right, yeah, and with the schools going to be opening up here this fall, I'm assuming that something's going to be going on at the middle school. You know, forget to be more traffic going up on the roundabout too, people are going to have to learn not to cross that white line. Otherwise, there's going to be some bumping and grating going on there that people aren't going to like, so hopefully everybody pays attention to that, because I've seen a lot of traffic going across the white lines. So, hopefully that can be something that we, hey, we'll have to put that educational video we put together back up there again.
We, we can resurface that.
Yep, we can resurface that. What's that?
I see just plastic tire lines.
Like the ones they put out on the highway east?
I know, I know, it's not a bad, it's not a bad idea, I'm just saying, we'll have to see how it goes, because again, it's training people how to handle a double roundabout like that. I don't think most people realize that both lanes can go east, and they're going to try and weave in on each other and.
I see a lot more than you do.
I, I know, I'm preaching to the choir here, Ross, but I'm just saying, it's just.
Is that something you guys have been seeing enough at the roundabout that you want an extra patrol request just in?
I think it's just something we need to keep an eye on, because I have seen it when I'm driving up there, and I don't go to work every day, but when I do drive up there, I'd say one out of three times, I'm seeing somebody. Going over the white line to make the curve a little easier.
Taking it easy.
Yeah.
If it's just a matter of being aware of, I'll make Ross aware of it, and then we'll try and get some extra enforcement ourselves, if it's something that becomes more of a problem than that, they'll put it in an extra patrol request, so hopefully everybody's going to be aware.
And it just might be happenstance that I happen to see it, you know, if it doesn't happen the rest of the day.
What I'd always, you're seeing.
It's education.
Well, yeah, it's education, I think that's, we'll just have to work on that, because that's just something, I can see that being an issue when things start. When everybody gets flustered about school and they're all trying to get there at the same time, and we've seen this show before, so. But yeah, let's just keep an eye on it.
I'm sorry, sorry, the last question I had was with the crashes, were there any injuries, lady in the crashes?
None I'm aware of right now, but one noted in the bottom of the report here, if you want, that's something I can look into and get back to you.
I'm just curious if there were any injuries or, or related to the roundabout, because that's, that's obviously going to be one important thing that we're worried about, right? With the increased traffic and the construction traffic, you know, I, I'm a little worried with especially younger drivers. And with all the trucks and so forth that are going through, it's, I'm sure it's kind of intimidating, right, for younger drivers and newer drivers. And if, if, if they're more at risk, right, with the increased construction traffic that's going on.
Okay, um, if you want, I can talk to Ross in the future when we compile this, we can see about including that information in the crashes.
Because it, that is a concern, right, because just the increased volume of traffic that's going on. I mean, it's, just driving myself, I just, it's taking a left turn on any road on County Seventeen, wow, you, you notice the increased traffic. And it's mostly construction trucks, heavy trucks. I'm worried about kids, bikes, and so forth getting injured, going to Casey's or wherever, so.
Okay, anybody got anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, if you guys do develop any more questions or any, uh, points of concern for us, please let us know.
Yep, we'll do that, all right.
Thank you.
All right, to, we'll zoom back forward to fourteen then, Brent, you got this one.
Um, hey, Brian, can you pull up first that one, little power point one?
The, oh, from SharePoint?
Yeah, I put it on, I put it on SharePoint here, we'll talk mills really quick first.
Call this one?
Yeah, just throw that one up real quick. At the last thing, it calls me, and I did mention that, want to share some information tied to mill levies. Uh, just so you're aware, I summarized an overall summary of every city, two ones that are more comparable to Horace or in our county. So you see Horace, West Fargo, Fargo, Castleton, Kindred, um, those are all obviously in Cass County, and Kindred, Donridge too. But then Watford City and Watton, Watford, the reason why they're on there is because they're probably the most similar to Horace in regards to growth. They're farther along, they've been through the growth, the boom, and then Watton is a bigger city nearby, but not in our metro. That's why they're thrown on there. Uh, you get into some of the other cities like Bismarck, or East, or, uh, Grand Forks, or, uh, Mandan, and they're a little harder to compare. Just because they have different dynamics going on, property valuations are really different, uh, you see that with Watton, for example. Watton is about two and a half times bigger than Horace, yeah, their valuations are really not far off from us. Now, these numbers are from two thousand nineteen, for two thousand twenty, our property evaluations, after valuations have gone through. Are actually around seventeen and a half million, so, uh, it's gone up a little over three million from nineteen to twenty. Uh, that is reflective though also in our area, land values are a lot higher. Uh, the cost of land just flat out is significantly more expensive. Uh, also home values are a lot more in our community than down Watton, in, in general. Uh, like I said, Watford City, Watford City is obviously bigger than us too, but they've been through some of the rapid growth. The reason why their mills are so low though, is oil money. They have had a lot of oil money to offset their levies, so that's why they're so low. And when I'm talking low, they're almost half of what a lot of everybody, or pretty much everybody else is at. Fargo, when you're looking at the city mills, what you're saying is that they offset theirs, their costs with a lot of sales tax, so say sales tax dollars. Uh, some of it goes to offset utility rates, and another chunk goes to offset infrastructure costs. But they have a lot of different revenue streams too. Another example of that would be franchise fees, we'll talk about that in just a little bit. The franchise fee for Fargo, if you think about, uh, franchise fee, if it's at two percent or three percent. That's revenue that's coming into the city from the utilities, for the utilities to be in the right way, think of every. That's revenue that's coming into the city from the utilities for the utilities to be in the right way. Think of every electric bill that you had in Fargo. And two percent of that, or gas, you know, that's pretty common. Cable, if you have cable TV, you pay a franchise fee for your cable. Uh, those are very common within communities like metro communities. You'll see that a lot. Uh, it's something that we're working on. But that's how they can offset some of their costs there too, is through different avenues like that. Uh, but like I said, I just wanted to give you a comparison to show you where we're at, where the mills are going. Uh, last year in twenty nineteen here, uh, parks did go up quite a bit for their mill. Um, ours was about as close as we could to be the same. And then you see where schools, uh, school district does make up the vast majority of your property taxes. That's a little over double what we are. Or where we are at the city level. So, um, like I said, I wanted to follow up with this. See if you have that information, if you had any questions on it, or if you're concerned. Uh, what any other cities are like in the area. I can look that, you know, look that up or get that information to you to show you how you compare. Uh, one thing to keep in mind too is when you're looking at these mills, the value of the mill. If you take the total taxable valuation divided by a thousand, that gets you a value of one mill. Now you take that mill, value, value of one mill and times it by what we say is like the city is sixty point seven six. You times it by that, that gives you our property tax. Or revenue, that would be how much we would have. Now, we don't necessarily pull in that exact amount. Because if you pay your property taxes early, you get a discount. So you get five percent discount. So we get five percent less. So we're typically not pulling in that same amount. But that, like I said, gives you an idea of what everybody pulls in. Land values greatly impact that. So if you're looking at like a Bismarck or a, you know, Watton or anywhere else. Their land values are very different than what we are. So that's how come their mills are impacted. And it, it's a really hard comparison when you're comparing mills straight up from one community to another unless you really get into the weeds to figure out how much money they're truly generating. So. Like I said, I just wanted to touch base on that. Did you have any questions on mills? I could bore everybody to death with mills if you want, but it's not very exciting. Can you go to that spreadsheet now? What I'll do is I'll give a, just an overview, a little bit more from what we had at our last council meeting. I don't wanna get into as much detail. Cause I know I tried to cover every single budget, but I wanna give you the highlights of what has evolved from that. And actually that very first page, that summary I think is very helpful right there, Brian. If you look at the summary right now in our draft budget, and this hasn't been done for Horace before.
Can we not have that?
I just sent it to Brian so he could have on the screen. So I didn't get it on the SharePoint there. I wanted to make sure you had the most current info done. So we could zoom that in a little bit if you want. So something you haven't seen at the council level before is when you look at total expenses. Or total revenue versus total expenses for all our budgets combined. You haven't seen that information before at the council level because we haven't broken it out that way before. We also haven't broken out the different budgets until just the past year or so where you see actual funds for solid waste, water, forestry, vector. All of our dairy enterprise funds and sales tax. Uh, there is a typo up there that says total expense on the top one. It's supposed to be revenue. But if you look at the top shaded in area under the draft twenty twenty one budget, you can see our total budget when you combine everything together is just under three and a half million dollars. And you could look at the previous years and you could see what we were at for the previous years. Some of tho, but those aren't on the budgeted amount. They're showing you actual amounts. If you look at twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, we didn't have a budget for some of those different funds. That's just actual expenditures tied to that. So you can see where we're at. Uh, obviously the city has grown quite a bit. We've been tackling different funding issues for those different funds. Uh, but like I said, we have. And then one of our biggest revenue generators there, um, is a sales tax fund. Uh, sales tax with the construction of the schools, the new developments, road projects. Um, and also new home construction. You can see that our, uh, revenue for sales tax is going up quite a bit. Right now we have budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty and six hundred for twenty twenty one. We like, we'll surpass that. I think we're gonna fall in the range around eight hundred thousand this year is given the ballpark, general ballpark with what activity we have going on. It could be higher. On the sales tax alone, I like to budget very conservative because a lot can happen with that in a given year. What you'll see for total expenditures is, uh, three point one five roughly million. The reason why you have a gap typically you wanna see, especially with government accounting, you wanna see money in, money out. Or where the money out is actually accounted for putting into reserve funds or doing different things with that. If you have more expenditure than revenue, it's because you're trying to spend out, you're spending down either reserve fund or fund balance. But in our situation here, why you see less expenditure than just balancing out is because sales tax fund. What we're doing is, what we're showing for twenty twenty one is not spending down all the revenue coming in for sales tax. Next year, we're looking at it as a building year. Let the sales tax fund build again so we can put it towards a bigger project. So that's what we're trying to do there. Um, and that money would just go into the fund balance for sales tax. This does give you a summary of overall where we're at for twenty twenty one for draft budgets. Uh, like I said, you can see some increases. General fund increase there is mainly tied to building permits, franchise fees and, uh, valuations. But we also have had drops in our other funding avenues. So we're offsetting them with, uh, general fund. So really what we had an increase in valuation, the decrease in state aid funding and the decrease in highway funds have resulted in almost a wash. With where we're at for this budget.
So are we gonna end up with twenty twenty with, I mean, halfway through the year, we're showing a five hundred thousand dollar surplus. But yet, you know, we're projected to have about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss. So is that, are we still on track? We haven't spent that money? That's still planned to come out?
Yeah. What you're showing is five fifty. Our fund balance is, I wanna say is around one point four million right now. So, yeah, we're, we'd be spending down.
The expenditure hasn't come out yet that will bring it back down.
Yeah, the expenditure has not occurred yet. So, uh, we did budget it, budget some of that money, that one point two five. Some of it is for the roundabout and seventy six, not all. Uh, some is for other areas to do infrastructure improvements within the community or the city. So. And will also reflect some of these with budget amendments. So we do have some areas where our dollars are truly going to be inflated beyond what you see here. So you'll see later this year that we'll have inflation in dollars. For example, where we had, uh, a development where cash and lieu was done for the park dedication. Well, that money went to the city and then the city passed it on to the park. So in order to account for it properly, we have to show money in and then money out. So it's a wash, but we have to reflect it on paper. So this is showing you before that. Uh, a couple of changes or a couple of items that evolved within the budget from what you've seen at the last council meeting. Uh, we're working with the park district and fire district on the possibility of a joint admin position. It'd mainly be with fire and parks, but where they're getting majority of the time. But then we'd have somebody. Where if they're not doing those different things, they would be working with the city and it helps with the coordination between all three entities. Uh, also if somebody called, the goal would be like if somebody calls for the park district. We have this happen quite frequently where somebody will be calling about wanting to sign their kids up for like an event or like T-ball or baseball or something. Well, we have to kick that back to one of the park board members because they don't have staff to be able to handle that. So if there's a joint position, we're able to work together. And also help get them in touch with the right person for that. Also, if there's questions for the fire department. They have somebody that could be dealing with a lot of those different calls. So that's one of the goals in mind tied to it. And then by, by those entities working with the city, they don't have to have that as a position necessarily under their umbrella. They could just contract with us on that. Uh, like I said, we did have a drop in state aid, franchise fees. Uh, we're working on getting some of those established that weren't established in the past. Uh, we're working with Cass County Electric and Excel Energy addressing those. Uh, it'd likely be around two percent fee. What we're looking at doing is it'd be mirroring, uh, what our peers are doing in the metro.
Well, we also have the cable and phone providers.
We do, we do have for, uh, cable providers, they pay a franchise fee.
So we have that in place. They're paying that franchise fee.
That's already in place. So that's been in place before, but the electric and gas, we've had some agreements, but they, we've also found out some agreements have been. Uh, enacted on. I don't know, I can't find any proof that they've been brought to you at the council before. So if we have an amendment to that, we're gonna bring that to the council. So you're aware of it. So. For highway fund, one thing we're looking at is having, this number hasn't changed a whole lot, but a transfer of almost a hundred twenty thousand dollars from general fund to highway fund. That is to make up for the loss and field tax money that the general, that the highway fund would have typically gotten. So that's why I was saying we've lost quite a bit from that. Um, the focus is towards smaller equipment and larger tools. If we have a larger equipment purchase that we'd be seeking, that would be handled through a budget amendment and making sure that we have the revenues. We have a good revenue year to be able to help pay for that. So if we have playing revenue from towards the end of the year. Then we come to council and say, we have a larger purchase that we'd like to propose. Uh, we do know that a new, a new snowplow replacing the orange snow, or dump truck. The snowplow and all that that is on our list for one future replacements. So if our revenues are adequate. Then we may be coming to you guys with that, but that would be through a budget amendment, not as a straight up budgeted one. Uh, we wanna make sure that we have the revenues to be able to pay for it without planning that bigger one right up front. Uh, another one that may be brought to you is we do have a grant from WSI. It's our workforce safety group. Uh, they have ergonomics grant for the city and. One thing that Public Works is looking at, or they would like to purchase is a boom truck or some sort of boom. So we can hang Christmas decorations, those banners, different things like that. Without having to rent that equipment every time. Cause currently we do rent it. Our staff has used the loader and just put somebody up there in the, the loader bucket on the tractor, put somebody up in that. But we've had some safety issues and concerns with that. Uh, where WSI wasn't real happy with that. So we said, no, we'll rent equipment until we get a boom truck. And so. Uh, that's another item. And then the other big purchase that we're looking at is relatively small compared to some of those bigger public works items like dump truck or a boom truck. Uh, is a UTV. We're looking at trying to find a way where we could get a UTV like a, like a Ranger or something of that nature. Or a side by side to where, uh, that could help with vector control. We'd like to get it set up to where we could help do some mosquito control. We get into smaller areas with that. Uh, maybe on some of the different paths or, um, in tighter areas just if we've had more condensed problems for mosquito control. And then that unit could also be used for different practices. So it may not be just vector. It might be a highway fund vector and other funds helping pay for this. Cause there can be some joint benefits. Like if our staff, you know, we have a staff member that goes out from Public Works and mows the rideways. He might not need to take a little tractor or a whole pickup to go mow rideways and pull the mowing trailer. You could pull it with UTV. Uh, park district does recently about when it's worked out pretty well for them. So.
What is the path, the bike path or walking path?
I believe it would be the city on it. The new one you're talking along seventeen, yes. It, it, I believe it'd be on the city for that. Yep. We have the brush, we have the brush set up. We are set up with the brush set up in that. Uh, if we want, you know, that's set up for a skid steer. If we wanted to have a UTV that had to get bills to that, we'd probably have to go with a little bit more robust of a UTV. That would cost a little bit more. Yeah, it'd be about, about twice as much. We're looking at about thirty to forty grand instead of twenty grand for a UTV. So. But we have the abilities with skid steer. Uh, paths located in developments like Lost River though, those are HOA paths. So we do have some developments like Lost River, Tara Gardens. I believe those are HOA or, uh, the one Tara might be Park. I think it's Park. So it's a mixture. But like I said, the Lost River one's a HOA one. Tara then Jim said is Park and kind of seventeen is city. Sixty third? Yeah, sixty third would be city also is what Jim said. So, yeah. The last item I had for budget to you, and just looking for feedback from the council for the water budget for revenues. We know we're going to have to do a rate increase as we address water quality. If we go treatment or cast rule or combination. We have a survey out right now. We had about thirty, thirty-five responses so far. Encouraging people to respond to it. Uh, we have, we'll have another posting or repost on Facebook. To encourage people to participate in that survey. And then also we'll have a notice, we'll have a hard copy of the survey available in utility bills, this next utility bill. So folks could put in with their utility bills, submit that if they don't have Airenet or Facebook. Or it gives them the link, you know, tells them what address to go to, to access the survey off our city website. However, what I'm looking for is just feedback on, for budgeting for water is whenever we do face that rate increase for water. Is it more interest to do a stepped approach? So if we need to get to a certain amount, do we take every, say, six months incrementally work our way up? And then by the time we connect the casserole or have water treatment to our combination, we have the rate that we need to be at in effect. Would you say no rate increase until? We have the water quality changed or increase right off the bat, have the revenue go towards capital improvements? And just folks would be paying higher dollar amount for water for a little while before the improvements actually take place. I know we've talked a lot about having a stepped approach. And the reason I'm asking for that is just so I could budget accordingly within the budget. So I could take an estimate and say, okay, I think we're gonna fall within this range. But that make, that could have a big swing on how our budget is for next year. So that's why I'm just looking for feedback of if there's any approach that is of interest one way or another. And I mean, if we have a, if council approves a different rate structure in the meantime, we can amend the budget. So that's not a big deal. But I do wanna have at least a general idea so we can be somewhat accurate within that budget. So I'm just looking for feedback from you on that.
I think we've talked about the stepped approach, but I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think we, we can't really enact anything until we have a more definite plan in terms of what direction we're going. But when, when we get that feedback from people, you know, from residents to say, if they're willing to, you know, adopt a higher base fee versus a, a more usage based fee. I think that will be one aspect of the rate increase that will help decide, you know, what residents are willing to accept. In terms of that increase. Cause we know, we know the increase is going to happen. And, and okay, do we, do we up the base? You know, to some certain dollar amount because we know it's gonna go there. And then we have, you know, maybe then the second step is to update the rate, you know? We could, we could talk through that. But I, I think a stepped approach is absolutely the right way to do it. Just a matter of, is it better to? Get that stepped of increase in the base, but then, you know, in the future increasing the rate? Or increase the rate now and then increase the base later. I, I don't know that it matters one way or another. It's still an increase. But it, and then a matter of, you know, when that goes into effect. So, but I, I think that can be a stepped approach.
Minus step approach as well. I mean, we have costs related to infrastructure independently, we do anything with water.
Right.
We have to start thinking about that. So.
Up until now, it's basically been trying to break even, right? And, and we're barely keeping up with breaking even, right? So now it's a matter of, okay, now we, we know we're making a plan for improvement. We've gotta build up that reserve. And that's what we're being told by the state as well.
Just confuse it with we don't make the adjustment. So we have a plan, communicate.
Yeah. So I, I think. I think one aspect is going to be, we will have to increase that rate when we approve it to. I think one aspect is going to be, we will have to increase that rate when we approve it to show the state that we are increasing our rates. So that we can get the SRF funding and the matching and so forth, the, the benefits of having the state help. So we will have to show that to the state before we actually can get it approved.
Yep.
So I, I, I think it's, a step approach is almost required. It's just a matter of how much it's going to be is going to be the next question.
We'll have ability to make adjustments by the time the final budget is proposed to council. Uh, I just want to make sure we're having a draft budget that's closer to where we're thinking. So we could call for a step, a stepped approach to some degree and uh, just call for that. Like I said, it just impacts when we show revenues impacting in our dollar amounts so we can have it. Al, you had a comment you wanted?
Good question. What, what kind of a rate you could rate increase? You're talking about twenty percent, fifty percent? What?
It's to give you a comparison of, and I can't say exact dollar amount because I can't predict that out. Cause we have to know what route we would be going for that. What I can tell you is just our peers for costs for water, like West Fargo and Fargo. West Fargo recently increased their rates. Uh, they have, they have a decreased base, their base is seven twenty-five. But then their cost per thousand is, no, their base is seven, their cost per thousand is seven dollars twenty-five cents. Now that's a lot higher, but you have to have better water quality to justify that, like what they have. Fargo increased their base, I want to say their base is around twenty-five dollars. And then their cost per thousand went up to four forty. So they have a different approach. But it gets up there. Cast rule, they're around twenty-eight dollars for a base, but then you pay five forty per cost per thousand. Casserole water, we're going to be around that four and a half to five dollar range for buying bulk water from them. And or that's just purchasing the water. So if we go casserole, we'd have to charge at least. You know, around that five dollar range per thousand, just to be able to pay for that water that we'd be buying from casserole. But we'd be refining that and having different rate structure ideas after we get the survey. Cause that's one of the questions we have is what is the preference for rate structure is from the residents?
Well, my question is still the same. Are we talking twenty percent?
It's going to be, I, I can't even tell you exactly how much it'll be. It'd probably be.
Our base right now is like eighteen, right?
No, our base is twelve and cost per thousand is three. So if you compare it, let's say to like the Fargo rate, the base would go up, would be almost double. And the cost per thousand would be about, about fifty percent increase on the cost per thousand gallons.
You look at all tapping into Fargo, like West Fargo did?
We cannot.
Yeah.
Due to.
Jurisdiction.
Due to water right service areas, we'd have to go through casserole. So we'd be paying a casserole bulk water rate and then we'd have to pay for that infrastructure from them. So that's why we're not, that's why we're looking at the treatment, casserole or a combination of the both.
I remember the reporter had on today's view of story.
Yeah. So, yeah.
All right. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. All right. So let's move on to number fifteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Council. As two of the residents here, Arlen Fisher and Al Ahmed have both indicated issues with the uh, Old River Ox, both one on the south side. Towards Liberty Lane, the other on the north side between Arrowood and, or Northwood and Southwood Drives. We evaluated the area. It is identified as a wetland, but I think we can still do some work with it just because we aren't using any funding over the multiple months at the time. No federal funds. So looked at, uh, for the north side, we refer to them as the north and the south, north side's up by Al's, by the Independence Park. So the first option we had was just to clean out, reestablish the drainage. And that one was estimated to be about thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's working through it and just taking out the high spots. Filling in the low spots, getting the water drained down to the existing pump station and out to the river through the existing piping. Uh, the next thing we looked at was a concrete channel liner, five feet wide approximately. And that was about a hundred to seventy-four thousand. That's going all the way, all the way around to pretty much Moss Way. Where Moss is itself through drive. And then the third thing we looked at, which is probably the uh, option that would get rid of the water the best. Is installing a drain tile below the grade right now. So we'd install it a foot or so below in a rock trench. Probably an eighteen inch rock trench with a six inch field drain tile through it and then a rock on top of that. Let the soil, let the water get through into that. Get down to the culvert on Southwood Drive, bore underneath that road and then put in a new lift station. Right now there's a simplex station over there. It's not real deep. It's not real. It's a, basically it's a coriant metal pipe turned on its side with a pump inside of it. So, um, we would install a new duplex lift stations. There'd be two pumps. We're done to say as I was going to, we must grab out of that pump and it wasn't working at one time. So this would give the operation of most of the other lift stations in, in town having dual pumps. And that one was quite spending about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So those are the three options we looked at for the north location. On the south side, it's a little bit better. There isn't the uh, trees and there isn't much uh, rubbing that would need to be done up there. But uh, the first thing was like we did the, did on the north side was clean out, reestablished grade, a little over thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand. These are all estimated numbers and going up past history. And the second one would be to install that concrete channel liner for around a hundred twenty-eight thousand. And then the last thing that we looked at was, was doing the uh, drain tile. And then adding a low flow lift station just outside of the big one. That is a much more robust station. It's precast concrete. It's got the pumps in it and all that. So that's a much bigger station. So this would just be installing a, a um, smaller station outside of that pump, pump into that one. And that would be, I don't know, let me look here, about seventy-four thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars. That was for drain tile seating, multi-mobilization, clear moving and a small lift station right on it. So, um, those are the uh, alternatives we looked at. You guys want to discuss those alternatives or want to talk some more?
Okay. So we're talking, I know one time we talked about the drain tile. So when we were talking about that, you know, the way that the grade there is so minor. I mean, it's like a flat.
Flat.
So would we talk about taking, is, is Cheyenne Drive going to be like the split zones where we're going to go one way from there and then?
The way that I figured it is that we would install tile up to the Cheyenne, Cheyenne. I figured about.
And that's from Sunny Side up to Cheyenne, right?
No, that's, this is.
Southwood to Cheyenne.
Oh, Southwood. Okay. Sorry. Right. That's what I meant. Sunny.
So I figured about eleven hundred and fifty feet of pipe and that basically gets up to, up to the Cheyenne.
Right.
The other way that I looked at it from the south and north was just up to Moss Way, kind of a gap in there. Kind of have to think about where to, where to break it if that's the option that you guys want to choose. Naturally Moss, Southwood and Moss is probably going to be the, the break even point.
We've got such a slow, I mean, that's why I just wondered, can you make it all the way from Cheyenne Drive over to that point in Southwood? Do we got enough of a grade?
With pipe?
With pipe?
We can manufacture grave with pipe and I'd do, I'd have to do a little more survey. All we did was a kind of preliminary shot, the structures in some random spots along the ditches too. So we go back and cross section a little bit more, but um, yes, we could, we'd make that lift station be deep enough where we could get a grade on that drain tile.
Okay.
The largest expense with that, that with the, is the lift station. That's a hundred fifty thousand at least in itself. Yeah. So.
So the recommendation right now is, is to actually put in the drain tile with that expanded lift station.
I think that's going to be your best option as to far as getting the water out of it. Uh, the other ones, if you clean it, it's probably going to silt in again. If you line it with concrete, you end up with a sidewalk in your backyard. I'm not sure that's really everything that they want. But it does, you can flow water on concrete a lot better flat than grass. So.
But it's, because it's so flat, you, you know, because the geography of it is so flat, it's going to silt in, right? And it's going to accumulate debris and that has, it's going to have to be cleaned much more frequently than if there was a buried drain tile.
Right. Uh, constructability is a little bit of a challenge in there just because it's so wet right now. I have a little bit of concern with maybe not being able to do it until it gets towards the fall. When it gets to be maybe even a little frost in there, just, just to be able to hold up machinery to get it through there. So.
I haven't thrown it at a concrete sidewalk than what we have right now. And to your point, I, I, I mean, I lived there since two thousand and four and uh, it's, it's changed and where the wires moved. But uh, even to the hot structure we had before got wet. It was, I, I did my lawn, I just stuck it there all the time. So yeah, it is, I can get away with the frost now.
Sure. Yeah. I agree. And you know, we had looked at potentially, uh, Brett and I, we had them, public works and looked at doing that concrete liner down on the south side. But Fisher was there. It's a much wider, more open area there and it doesn't have to be super wide. We had talked about five feet just for maintenance, getting a skid steer down there, being able to sweep it off or um, clean it. But we could shrink it up if, if we need to.
So is that what you're saying is we do more of the concrete approach on the, the north side or?
South side.
Of the south side and then do the drain tile on the other section?
Another question I have though too is, is that just shared between the residents to sit on there? Because I mean, we've got a big number of special sections could be, you know, three hundred thousand dollars in our side with that thirty thousand persons.
Right. And that's where we, we'd have to talk about how, how, how to fund it going, going forward. And that's, we talked a little bit about the city contributing to it and that's, we can talk about that, but.
I mean, it becomes a, from my speaking for us, it becomes a, then I guess I wrote about the UTV and I've got to see the, from mosquitoes all the time. We just let it grow, get there.
There's a lot more of the city that drains into that. So I think a lot of people think.
There is.
I've watched that water flow. I've been fighting this issue for forty years, forty years. In fact, I brought with me a letter that I wrote to the city council in September of twenty-ten. And it's just, I spent four hours out there today and another thirty dollars on another, on another check valve. I thought I was going to have to replace my pump again. Uh, it, it's, it's genial. And I'm, to be honest with you, I'm fed up with it.
Well, you get, cause the other thing too, there's a culvert over by Al's place too. And that takes in from north, the north side too, doesn't it?
It takes from Northwood Drive.
Yeah. Then I don't know how far that, what other is encompassed in there to bring that water there. If it's just Northwood.
Pretty much Northwood Drive.
Okay. So like the other, the developments north of there, where does that?
North of there, so West River Road goes more or less down into by the senior center and then out to Wall Avenue that way.
Okay. So they're not involved in any of that area?
I'm not so sure about that.
Okay.
Cause I, 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 when I was, when the gyms were shut down, I did my walk over that way. And you can, I can see the water comes, comes from the west, north side of Northwood. That in, into Northwood and then into that culvert. And that culvert should never have been put in there in the first place. That's not true. Well, that was Gerger's doing. You know, draining Northwood into my backyard. But I call it Gerger's revenge. What's trying to really pisses me off every time I look at it and mobbing it and uh, I don't.
Well, maybe it's something, we should just double check that though to make sure.
Yeah, we'd look at the drainage area. I, I, like I said, I was just trying to get some preliminary.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying, I just want to make sure though that we're, if there is water that is being introduced there from other areas, that they're going to get involved with this as well.
Well, and for us too, I mean, if you, if you Liberty Lane, there are all dumps into that area too. So it's everywhere along that whole area of subdivision that shit. And I'm like, Al, I mean, I've heard through many pumps rated, I can't rely on pumps and my own power in there to pump it up.
You've done a bunch of cleaning too outside of that. You maintain that, that concrete around it?
Yeah. So yeah, uh, this last one was Mary Sarah that has done it. Uh, and friend, I forgot to send you an email that guys from, and that debris, I'll send that to you. But yeah, we, we try to keep it clean, clean the grade out. We try to keep it flowing. I used it at one point in time. Until the concrete was there, I was able to take my four wheeler and cut a, a canal down. And it worked. It all concrete, they come together and finally come down. But now the concrete under the quarter was a great idea, but it's lifted and now it acts as a dam.
Sure. Yeah, there's a pad right outside of the invert, into this pump station where there's a pipe. That comes off of Liberty East and then has to turn and come back west to go into the pump station there. So that's kind of.
You, I, I know I don't solve all the problems, but Tori, I mentioned this to you before as well. Because the genius who put that, when they put that, replaced that culvert on, on the end of North, Southwood. You know, they, they left it at above the bottom of the river end of the ditch. I mean, what the hell kind of an engineer does that? When you can see that there's a problem there in the first place. So why not dig a something like Gary and I did, Gary Dogger and I did, put a pump in there and pump it through, and pump it through that damn culvert?
Get it the rest of the way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those, and those cat fills, they have to be harvested out of there, cleaned. That, I mean, that'd make a heck of a difference as well. You know, and I, and I had done it, but right now I don't know where to use or left.
You'd have to have your duck waiters on to try and get through there. You're going to get stuck.
Well, that's, and it was the same thing down there today.
Right. I know it. It's wet.
And I'll tell you what, I got, I got ten grand kids and all but one of them walk. And they love to go play in the backyard. What, you think I'm letting them out there? You should see what's in that water.
Yeah. And that was one of the concerns. So I had talked to a couple contractors about getting down in there is it's been wet for so long. Something just got to sink out of sight. So.
Right. And that's the problem. And I think that's the whole way back there. Leaving like a mile old backyard, that was the same thing. You didn't walk in there.
Yeah. So there, there was talk of having to sit on the side, you know, and clean it from the side, not being able to be down in the middle. And maybe disturbing a little bit more land on the two sides and pulling it away from each direction or something like that.
So what about the?
Unless it's to the frost.
The other thing too is kind of that the bridge is there, you know, the walking bridge you go across. Is that something that could just?
They can work around it.
Okay. Oops. Just, yeah. Assuming so, just want to bring it up that that's an impediment that we're going to have to deal with as well to do this.
I was telling Tori, this maybe you folks don't know this, and I'm sorry to interrupt here. But we have water so high back there, kids were standing on the top of that bridge and diving off into it.
Really?
Oh yeah. I have pictures of this stuff, huh?
So do you want me to go back and look at a drainage area for it? See what areas are getting the benefit from this and then we bring it back?
You have to, yeah. We, we got to know.
That's what I was going to do. I get you a map, show you, show you what areas run to it and maybe that'll help us a little bit with the cost is seeing what, what have you done with it?
Like our little state, I mean, how much of Liberty actually comes and just gets involved in that too.
Well, and how much, how much is the, well, you're, you're would have to, you would have to actually go shoot some elevation because what you're seeing on the GIS map may not act.
We do some spot shots. We have got LiDAR through there. So we can use that.
Okay.
But I think that's the fair way to do it right now is get an idea who's all involved.
Like I said, I didn't know that anything else. I just thought it was Northwood that drained in there. You'd be surprised if West River did, but it might. And that's what we'll look at just to make sure. And then we can present to you guys at least a breakdown with the options here of what, right? Ways that you could.
And I think that's what we should do. So then we can figure out a way of how much the city can throw into this thing.
Yeah.
Maybe Southwater Water Management District has a much, much bigger gap as well. They were in my, I talked to Robert Rodchow twenty years ago, thirty years ago, when he was on the board. And he drives that Chris and Foley pump, the pumps, he's talking about.
I mean, let's explore the options and see what we can do.
They're running usually come from the streets.
But the, the first step is just making sure that we get the right design. And then once we get the right design, then okay, now let's talk about the funding options. So how much will the city kick in and so forth, right?
Which one appeases you, Al? Which one do you like the best? Drain tile probably?
Well, that's what, that's what my neighbor and I did.
Yes.
We dug drain tile. Did I tell you about that?
You had mentioned it.
And we dug a stump. And we dug, and we got a pump in there. And then I run holes, uh, two and a half inch holes from that sum. All the way down past my, all, all the way down my property, past Jeff Wilson's property down into, into the culvert.
Yeah. But you're not a big fan of having sidewalks in your backyard, are you?
How about this? Save a couple of wells out there and have the water flow.
Sure. Make it a feature?
Even, even that would be better. And I'm, and I'm serious about that. Even that would be better than that goddamn mess we, that mess we have right now. It's ridiculous.
Well, the biggest problem is just the grade. The grade is so flat. It's just any, any disturbance of the surface, you know, or grass and whatever grows up, it impedes the waterfall. So that's, that's where the drain tile helps with that situation to any, you know, so it isn't sitting there for too long a period of time and killing the grass. So to me, that's probably the most viable to try and get that back. Once it's dried out, now we can actually do something with that backyard, right? Get it dried out.
I, I've got a lot of money tied up in that.
Well, I believe it.
Over lots of years.
Well, I believe it.
I'm wondering, okay, so Jim, I know this is going to be hard to do because weather's playing into this thing too. But like we're thinking about this, when we get down to it, how dry does it need to be for us to even get equipment in it? Cause right now it ain't going to happen. You're going to.
Right. And that's why I'm thinking it would have to be kind of maybe a fall type where it's either drier or maybe even a little frost in there. Just to big, just to get a crust on it to be able to operate through it.
Okay. That's I'm wondering how frozen can it get? I mean, cause we'll have a window here.
Yes. There'll, there'll be a window. I mean, the ones I talked to didn't say, oh no, it can't be done.
Right.
It's just, it would involve like a mini. You couldn't put a big one down, a big ex pair down there. You couldn't, if you're going to do tile, you couldn't put. It's just, it would involve like a mini. You couldn't put a big one down, a big ex pair down there. You couldn't, if you're gonna do tile, you couldn't put a big plow down there. You'd have to probably open cut it and and put it back in. You wouldn't be able to set up a big um plow and just go like they do in farm fields. You'd probably have to use a mini. Make a trench, bury it, put the rock in there and go from there. So um you know, if you're able to clean the cattails out down at the end, some of it maybe would flow a little bit more, cause that's holding back water too.
Sure, we know that.
Cattails in there.
There's you, there's also cattails along on the other side of that bridge too, going back to the Cheyenne Road there. I mean, there's like three or four spots where there's cattails that impede flow as well. So and even on the other side for that matter, so. Okay, let's, let's find out the drainage area.
Yep, I'll get you a map for the drainage area and then we'll break it down.
Okay.
Yep.
I like the tile option right now just because it's not the most expensive.
And I'll look at too, we may not have to replace that lift station with the depth we've got, but that was, if we can just bore underneath. I know there's been some issues with that lift station. That's why maybe it would be a time to improve it, get it up to.
Also know it's one of the oldest ones too.
It is and it's pretty simplistic, so.
And from our perspective, we just want the most effective process abilities of all costs.
Sure.
I don't wanna have to pay the common money or something. That's gonna deliver the margin make better than, you know, the next option.
Yeah, right, and that, that area isn't necessarily an old obstacle. It was improved with part of Arrowhead's addition. We found that out that it was, it was actually constructed back when Arrowhead was done through the plan and the plans.
All the way what up to?
Just done by where Arrowhead was.
Yeah.
Kind of in that area. The rest of it's a whole lot. It was improved at that time, so.
Well, we need to rid of our cattails too and it's worse now. I mean, and it's part of the concrete paint for the very part of it.
Does any other questions or thoughts?
Mine is just I've had to deal with the damn cattails and more development. Sometimes you gotta do, it's more expensive, but it's a new way to fix it. Let's do it the right way. So these guys don't, I know it's gonna potentially have more cost. Hopefully we can share that across. We just don't want to come back in five years going, that didn't work and that didn't, you know.
Yeah, we've got the option for a little more depth here than we had in your backyard, so.
Now, we did have, as I mentioned, in Dave's development, that was petitioned by the neighborhood. And it was all special assessed.
Right.
And not saying that would be the route, I'm just saying, you know, the history of Maple Grove, what they went through on theirs. The city does have sales tax dollars. That might be an option to where we could do that. As Jim and I, Jim's going through those, you know, he's looking into benefit area. Him and I could look at that and I could look and see where comfort level is of if the city wants to put sales tax dollars, how much it could be. You know, at least a recommendation from the staff side of what I'd say would be.
That's what we gotta look at.
It would likely be a share.
Right.
When you're talking to dollars like that for improvement like this, but that's, that'll be up to you guys, so.
Right.
But we could refine that. Have a next meeting would be goal?
A goal?
Well, I have, you only give me a week now, so it'd be a little difficult.
We'll, we'll try to get, we'll try to get it back to you as soon as we can.
Yeah.
And we'll let you know.
Okay.
So we come up with something, so we see what we're dealing with. So we're gonna get an idea on the numbers.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We're not breaking the bank here on both sides.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry for leaving you a question, but the agenda's posted on the website, so I mean, although you're stimulating meetings, I don't.
What's he implying there? I don't know what he's implying. Yeah, it was posted, it's posted.
Yep.
They are. It's also first and third Monday at six. Went, uh for the meeting, but then the agenda's posted. We put it on the board outside and then we put it on the website too, the city's website, so we do have it posted there.
Yeah, but I don't know, Jim won't be ready for the next meeting.
Yeah.
We'll try.
I'll try to.
Yeah.
Bye. Thank you all.
Yep.
I really appreciate it. Like I said, I've been going to these city councils maybe for forty years and finally we have somebody who's paying attention, doesn't drain a line or a bucket.
Appreciate that, Al.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. All right, let's move on then. Jim, you got the engineering side of the others?
At last, at the last city council meeting, we talked about doing some miscellaneous street improvements. One of those that got brought up was a, some patching and seal coat of the Sunnyside area. After that meeting, we got a little direction from some of the neighborhood, neighbors up in the Sunnyside area that it might be a little more um push to get sewer now. So we are going to update our costs. I went back and looked through all of the surveys that we received and we were very vague at that time cause if S S L wasn't in place, we didn't know if that was gonna get through. And just kind of a general, are you interested or not? And there were more nots than yeses, but the theme with the nots was cost, as you, as you'd expect. So we are going back now and we are updating the estimates, knowing that the S S L is in line now, knowing what we've got to get through there. And we're going to update that, those estimates and send out another survey with a more accurate number on it. To see if there are more people who are interested in hooking up to the sewer. So um the way that the that area is, it would be inevitable that the street would be tore up in some regard if if partial or halved while the sewer was installed. So rather than spend eighty thousand or whatever looking at to do a chip seal and some patching, we look at doing a sewer job too, so. Um I did talk with the Casper Water users about replacing those lines up in that part of the world. And if it's a city, it's initiated project, it can be done. Otherwise, the residents would have to request it to Casper Water. So um we are having an option for that in the estimate just because it makes sense if we're gonna tear stuff up to be looking at some of those lines.
So does that mean that not all residents in that area are on Casper Water?
They are.
Okay, so it's just that the lines are old enough where they may need to be replaced?
Potential.
Okay, that's we don't know.
Sizeing as well?
So we, I just had a real brief conversation with Casper about just kind of a, looking at doing sewer there. Would you be thinking of doing water at the same time? Cause I prefer you did.
Yeah.
Rather than do it multiple times, so.
That's what I was gonna say, is it sizes and they can get fire hydrants so that you could have potential for that in future.
That did come up and um there will need to be some more discussion. They didn't say no to fire hydrants, but we have to have some discussions, cause right now, the the new water tower is on the low pressure side of their system and the Sunnyside and all the old neighborhoods are on the high pressure side of it. And they're not interconnected other than the tower. The high pressure fills the tower which feeds the low pressure. So we would have to have some more conversations on that. He said, when I talked to Brent Brinkman, he said, there's, you can put what fire hydrants in, not a problem. But we just have to go through some more discussions with them once we get through it. Just figured I'd ask him since we're looking at doing something in that area, so.
Good.
Well, with the land to the east, you know, being zoned commercial and with the schools coming with all the housing, is that the time to incorporate water and sewer to that section as well?
And that's something we had talked about even on a staff level, was talking to councilmen and seeing if there was something in the works for them to to develop or or whatever. There's a um a right of way. I think it's north of your place, John, that leads out into that large area off of Sunnyside.
South.
Is it south of your place?
Yes, south of the stop sign.
And that's where we're looking at putting a lift station and that would be a nice way straight across over to Seventeen. So we'd have to work with that landlord just to see if there's anything in the planning for that to get to route our piping so it makes sense for everybody.
Well, yeah, because that road is, there's easement going to the east.
Yeah, I think there's three of them, two or three of them along there.
There's one down south and then there's just.
Is it just two? I think it's just two.
I think it's two. I don't think there's anything up north.
No, I think you're right, John. Now that I say that. So um we're updating the estimates right now. I hope to have a uh survey out probably the first part of next week is what I'm, what I'm thinking it's gonna end up being, so.
Cause it could almost be the tale of two sides of the road. You know, one side may love it and be just gonna incorporate new development to ease and the other side may just say, I don't know.
Right, and there, there was, like I said, it was, it was a more of a no than a yes, but there was quite, it's two years later.
Yep.
And we've got a lot more knowns now than unknowns. And the more facts that we can, we can uh give the people, better decision, they can make a better decision, so. That's that one. Ah, status report. So the final inspection for Cup Creek and Visto's industrial addition will be tomorrow morning. I hope the rain holds off. Lakeview Drive, Seventy-Ninth and Sixty-Third, we had a spirited discussion at our construction meeting last week with them being, completion date was a week ago. So we had a nice little conversation with them. The paving is on schedule to be complete this week. That still means there's street lights. It means that there's behind the curb work to be done, but tomorrow is our construction meeting on that and we'll push for another updated schedule, so. They did do a lot more hand pours last week than they had in the prior weeks. Unfortunate it took past the completion date to get it, but they um are working on it, so. The school, you had asked about the middle school. And what I got is the single level academic area is very near completion. The second floor of the two-story academic area is near completion. And on the second floor, the first floor of the second floor, their academic admin offices and the remainder of the buildings are probably three weeks out yet. Still have three weeks to go, so. They have pushed the completion date back for for that project and I believe Mark said they are planning on moving in, at least starting to get some of their stuff for deliveries this week or next week.
Yeah, they have to, cause they're, they're within two weeks. They're within two weeks of admin folks moving into the offices. I mean, it's, it's happening.
And that's apparently according to that, this is behind, that's three weeks out yet.
What, on the school, what we do anticipate is it's gonna be obviously very, very tight of them even getting the temporary C O. And with that, there's probably gonna be a lot of conditions with that temporary C O. If we were to issue it, there's gonna be handful of conditions of, you know, they can't go in certain areas, they have to be locked off, things they have to be done by certain dates. There's gonna be, and we anticipate that they're gonna be, well, based on what Mark Mira was indicated to me here a little bit ago, he said that they anticipate that second week in August that they're gonna be asking for that, so. It's uh, there's a lot of work to get done.
Wow.
And they working like twenty-four seven out there or?
I don't know. I don't believe they are, but I don't know.
Russ, no.
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 They can't put any pressure on Mike to keep this stuff done?
Yeah. They're, they're gonna be moving.
Well, anyway.
Why do you have to move?
I'm not.
I hope that's a pile of dirt. You said you're gonna get K P H to get going on that there.
They're moving it slowly. They started on Monday. We had a meeting with the school and the contractor and that Monday they started moving it, so.
But it's not a small pile of dirt.
It's getting to be a mountain of dirt down here.
Dirt.
It is.
At the present rate, it'll be out of there.
September?
In a year.
Well, they don't have a year, Russ.
They're using little trucks. And they broke the back one yesterday.
Oh. Did you go over and cut up a hose or something?
The truck came along, well.
Anyway.
So there is some movement on that.
Any um update on when South Farms is gonna start during?
South, so right now, Lost River Fifth has three underground crews, a landscaping crew and a dirt work crew. With a fourth underground crew starting this week. And they've got a lot of iron out there. If you wanna see equipment go out there. So once they get the deep sewer done in Lost River Fifth, they're gonna mobilize that big equipment up to Southdale, cause most of Southdale is deep. And it's wet, so they're gonna get, like I said, they got a lot of iron out there. And they're doing the deep stuff and then they're gonna move up to Southdale as well. So I, I mean, it's probably gonna be a week, week and a half before they get up there, but.
How are they gonna get in?
To Southdale? They come off Seventeen. There's access there.
Tell them to stay off Seventy Third. Seven Third.
Oh, yes, yes.
They'll destroy it.
Yes, yes. That's getting improved as part of this project.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you got somebody to lose there.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, what else you got on that, Jim?
That's all I got tonight, Cory.
All of you, okay. Well, we'll hope that they can keep moving things along on that.
Yep.
Stuck. All right, Brent, what do you got on Seventeen?
Okay, um, school update, just a little bit more on the high school. We talked middle school, high school. Granted, a building permit to where they could start the masonry walls. So they keep progress, but it's at their own risk. Our staff is finishing up the plan review for them, cause the plan, plans have changed multiple times. So we're wrapping that part up. Uh anticipate then we'd be approaching the full permit. So we've had to do partial permit so they can get moving on the school and not have drastic delays. Mosquito control, our staff is out Saturday, sprayed Saturday night. Keeping eye on the traffic or on the mosquito counts. If they're showing high again, they'll be out there again, weather permitting. Obviously, we have to have the right conditions, not too windy, but a little bit of a breeze and can't have it raining at time, so we'll see what we can do.
Cas County's been in the, in town putting down control as well.
Yep, their mitigation control or preventative measures, so that's helped some. We do believe that with the high wind or the winds that we had towards the end of the week last week, it probably skewed the trap counts is what what we're hearing from vector control. However, uh like I said, where we can be aggressive and do that, we're going, you know, we're gonna try to. We have folks that ask about aerial spraying and still, if we're aggressive with the truck based approach or we stay on top of that, it's gonna be just as, or about as effective as aerial spray, especially where the complaints we get about mosquitoes, the absolute most are folks along the river. You have that tree canopy. That tree canopy is gonna stop a lot of that residual from the chemical to come down and get mosquitoes. You know, it's, it's, it it's meant to get the mosquitoes when they're flying in the air, just like what we have. One thing that we are looking at, uh talking with our public work staff today a little bit, are there ways that we could put like a ground application too? Just like if you went to spray your yard, that's more of a ground base, that's a more appropriate, longer lasting. So last few, few weeks to a month or so, depending on how much rainfall you have. Versus the spraying that we do is more aerial or air-based spraying, so it is residual in the air for a while and mosquito Pfizer and kills a mosquito. So we're looking at, can we put some, in some of the problem areas, can we spray to help get a, something that'll be on the ground a little bit more around plants. So we're looking at our options there. Like I said, they're trying to be aggressive that when we get the right weather conditions to be out there. I know Fargo and West Fargo and Moorhead, we're looking at doing aerial spraying tonight. I don't know if they managed to do it, cause typically they'd be doing it about right now. And we have rain coming, so might not be too friendly for or effective for their spraying if they were to do that. Strategic planning, we have a strategic planning survey that is being refined right now. We anticipate that to go out in the near future. That would be just trying to get a general, it had a series of questions, just trying to get a general feel from residents of, you know, what do, what makes horse special to them or what do they like about horses, what they don't like. Just general questions about the community. So that'll be interesting to have that out. Uh there's a survey platform called Polco. Survey respondents are gonna have to sign up for that Polco survey, but then they can complete the survey. The consultant working with us had good luck with that survey platform. If we see concerns of not getting enough response, we may try another approach, but uh we're working with that where we can. Building permits are about a week, week and a half out right now, so we have been playing catch up. We anticipate with the walkthrough of Cup Creek tomorrow, uh we anticipate building permits coming around our corner for Cup Creek. We've gotten a few for Cup Creek, but we anticipate quite a few more coming to us within that first week after we say, yep, houses could start being built out there. And then facility needs assessment, we're moving forward some more on that now. That's been slowed down from COVID, cause we had trouble gaining site visits lined up. Uh we do have five different communities lined up or in the works to where we'll be able to look at city halls. These city halls are down towards the Twin Cities area, because you get a concentration of city halls in a short distance, you can knock out visiting quite a few different ones. Obviously, we'll look at some around here too, but the ones down there, uh, like I said, it's just cause you could go in a day or two, you could go through and knock out quite a few visits. So we're looking at that in mid-August. And then we're pushing to get the, have the consultant get that facility needs studied on fairly quickly after there. So they should be able to get the basic information in place. Uh, the site visits are going to get more perspective of size, what we're looking at. And if we're missing any different elements that, uh, we weren't getting from a survey standpoint or working with Council Mayor Philon or Cory. So uh, that's a little update on facility needs. So. Audit, we're still on track. Last I heard from Becky that audit, we should be seeing something in August. So we're trying to push for it to be done a little sooner, uh, but August is what we're hearing. So we're working with them. We're hoping to be able to have that information to where then we could share it with, uh, with Colliers and Onsted. So that could help us potentially with bonding for next round of bonding. That's all I had.
One question I had, post office update?
No permit. I don't believe permits been issued, has it?
No, new plans came in today.
New plans today.
Oh, good Lord. You're kidding.
No, again.
New plans and other, like big changes or?
Uh, plans that they can actually submit that they have the, that they're allowed to submit.
Does that have to be reviewed by plan zoning or is it till two days?
Uh, I think no. No, they went through design. Yeah, they went through a design review already.
Okay.
So they accomplished that. Uh, we had issues of where they couldn't, they didn't have the rights, I believe, to the plans. So
Yeah, there was a similar issue between the applicant and their.
Sure.
Yeah. So anyways, that's been hopefully worked out and we'll be able to get that review done and get them moving forward. They are operating out of the truck now. Uh, so I believe it's, the hours are posted on, I believe on our Facebook and also we've communicated them out, but uh, I believe it's ten thirty to twelve thirty and then one to four is when there's people out there typically.
So are they more consistent with the attending? You know, is there somebody there at those hours?
I'd say overall, yes. I don't know if they had seen any different.
Okay. Cause that was an issue last meeting, right? Where they, they weren't open the hours that they were posted.
Yeah. So they've been a lot more consistent, uh, rotating different folks out in and out. So it isn't just one person having to sit out in the van there. So, uh, but yes, we've seen more consistent hours in the post office. Uh, and they've been making it work and I, we have been seeing quite a few residents, uh, go to the truck, interact with them there, buying stamps, you know, mailing packages, things like that, and then come and get their mail. So it is being used. We haven't had anybody sit out there and keep track for or of it, but we do know it's being used quite a bit. The trap, foot traffic in city hall is greatly increased. So.
Do they have a?
Time scheduled originally set?
I was just gonna ask.
For completion?
Originally, I believe it was November.
October.
October. Yeah. I don't think they're gonna make it in October, but that's since they only have their permit yet.
Wow.
Okay. Hopefully this penalty is replying or something.
And that's a private job between them or a job between them. So post office would be a tenant of that building. So it's a private, done privately.
Anybody else got any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Let's move on then to portfolio reports. But the only thing I got is I, we got an email. You guys probably did too, from the League of Cities. They're gonna do a virtual uh, meeting this fall, not, nothing on site. So.
So the conference is not on site? It's virtual?
Yeah, virtual conference. So we'll have to see what, I mean, that, we just got notified on that. So I'm not sure what that involves yet, but it's gonna be virtual. Um, and that's all I got. So John, what do you got? Chelsea's quiet.
Nothing more for me.
Everybody's quiet. All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Brian got that one.
Second.
John does a second. All the favors say aye.
All right.
And you're done.